Okay, good evening. We have a very busy schedule tonight on the agenda. A lot of things to discuss. First thing I'm gonna do is open the meeting to the public. I want to clarify the open meeting laws and procedures. I decided to adopt my predecessors' policy to require questions from the media to be in writing, and I will research them and get back to them if we can, and either at the next meeting or sooner if it's urgent. So, open the meetings to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time may do so at this time. I'll call them there separately. Anybody?
Yes. Is this your policy start tonight or Friday morning?
Yes, yes.
Good to know.
Thank you. Hey, Ron?
Ron.
Sir?
Oh, you just dropped the business card. We'll second.
No, we'll get it. Well, he's the guy that's the most interested in the Pfizer plan. That's his big thing.
Yeah, we love Ron.
He's a good guy. Yeah. Okay, I guess you guys want to identify yourself to the audience here and...
Yeah, you want us to give a few words?
Yeah, yeah. Tell us which one to do.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dan Kreutz. I am a managing partner at ERS Investors. Primary role is in business development.
I'm Mark Gaines, also managing partner at ERS Investors, dealing mostly with demolition, environmental remediation.
Okay, so just go ahead.
Yeah, tell us what we're doing.
So, we, you know, we're not gonna be nothing earth-shattering for all of you tonight. But what's really important to us is that the village knows that we are really, really happy to be here. This is a big priority for us. This is completely in our wheelhouse. And we are going to, in fact, redevelop the former Pfizer facility. And we're gonna work with you. We're gonna work with the community. And we're going to bring industry here. We're going to bring manufacturing here. We're going to bring warehousing here. And this isn't easy. My understanding is this is a challenging project. But we are making great progress. So, we're ahead of schedule on the demolition. So, this is a little bit early for me to be talking about business development. But, I mean, there's a lot of interest, obviously, in the community. We're very aware of the emotional nature of Pfizer leaving. And we get it. And we're gonna do everything that we can possibly do to get that place back into a productive use and bring economic activity back to Ralph's point. And we're well underway. So, what I can tell you today is we have had... I have had significant conversation with manufacturing, more than just ideas back and forth. This has been a significant place. I've had significant conversation with intermodal transportation warehousing, more than just a casual conversation. We have had conversations regarding the rail. Obviously, the rail's a great asset. So, it's early. I mean, we're halfway through the demolition. Well, that's ahead of schedule. And we're really pleased with where we are today. We're very confident. We're cautiously optimistic, of course. But, you know, this is a great spot. There's a lot of great attributes to being here from a business perspective, from the manufacturing perspective. And one thing I wanted to do, I'm gonna leave some business cards here. There's a lot of things lined around about what's going on. If you didn't hear it from us, it's in the rumor category, okay? Just it. So, what I have here, our web addresses on these cards. Feel free to pass these out. There's a box to click on on the website. Anything you want to know. Just put your email, put your name, your email address in there. Type in your questionnaire, concern, and we'll get back to you. Now, we're gonna have a more formal presentation with Pfizer included in the summer. We don't have a specific date yet. But that's in the works.
So, we should make sure that we get the press there?
We'll get the press there. We'll get the whole thing lined up. You know, we'll run it through the proper channels. I'll have collected all the concerns and questions that have come through on the website. And we'll give you that. And I think, you know, realistically, I don't wanna overpromise, but I think in the next 30 days, we should have some announcements. It's a little more concrete as far as progress. But I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves. That doesn't help anybody, right? So...
So, you think in five years, there'll be some buildings there?
Way before that. Way before that.
So, you said you're talking to different businesses and everything. Is that just for the two buildings that you left?
That's for...
Or is it for new...
Well, we're still working on the buildings. Those aren't for sure yet. But those are expansion plans that we think you made in one of the buildings if we get to keep them. And there is a significant opportunity for that to grow. So, we're going to start in the buildings if we get to keep them. And then we will, you know, working with you guys, of course, you know, we will lay out a one, two, three, four, five year plan, an expansion plan. And, you know, if we're lucky, we're on the way.
So, do you plan on keeping those two warehouse buildings?
We are trying as hard as we can.
Do they call them number 21 and 22?
We're trying hard. We're trying hard. It's Pfizer, right? If Pfizer is Pfizer, you know, they've been really good to us, but it's still Pfizer, right? They don't really care about us. But they're great. They've been great to work with, but, you know, we don't...
Yeah, so we're... We have to make sure that those fit into our plans.
Yeah, we're...
So, they may fit into our plans and they may not.
I know they had spoken about it was looking at about a million dollar investment to get them standalone buildings, to be able to rent them out, resell, or whatever you do with them.
Well, depending on the type of tenant, it's significant capital, certainly.
I mean, that was a number I heard floated by your company.
Yeah, certainly. Certainly, it's significant money to get that to a point where they'd be ready to go.
I think the community should recognize that, obviously, we're spending money, right? We didn't just acquire a property and put a fence around it, right? We're actually doing work, right? The intention of redevelopment, bringing it back on the actual, better way, creating jobs, economic incentives, right? That's what we're trying to do. My position kind of on the redevelopment side, how to make pre-development side, is making sure that, you know, decontamination, paving, demolition happens in that order and that we make sure we do everything according to the applicable state and federal regulations. And it's been going very well. We've made great progress and things are being done in satisfaction of all levels, and we don't anticipate that changing. As they mentioned, yes, we are ahead of schedule. And, you know, that's good news. Because that just gives us a better chance to get tenants involved and interested and support the more progress we're making.
Thanks. Sounds good. Does the board have any questions?
What's your timeline for having everything cleared out for the demolition?
Yeah, I think substantial completion by the end of the year. You know, we're making very big progress. And so, that's...
Now, you're waiting until school gets out before your demolition of buildings?
Yes. That's the next phase. That phase won't happen until the school's out.
Well, we feel very welcome. We do really do. We're very welcome. We're really looking forward to being a member of the community for many, many, many years.
I hope so. I didn't realize how big 21 and 25 were until they took the buildings out from in front. At that, I was only seeing it either from the inside or from walking down one of those roadways. And it's huge. And it looks like it's a pretty nice tool.
I worked there for 21.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so you know, it's a little complicated.
Kind of hard wrenching to see it come down.
I did a very bad today. I got lost for about two minutes and I thought, I will find Mark. I might be in a problem. It took me more than a few times to figure out where I was.
Easy to do.
Thank God every door I opened, so I got out.
Tom, do you have anything you'd like to ask or...
No, I'm all set for now.
Jamie?
No.
Tom?
We wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you. All right, we appreciate you.
Okay, anytime you wanna come and give us an update or anything, we'd be glad to hear it.
All right, sure.
And they're gonna rebroadcast this on the public access TV.
Okay. As soon as we have something, some more information, it's worthy of coming here. We'll sort of get back and see you guys.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our pleasure. Yep. Thanks very much.
Okay, next item is minutes of June 3rd meeting. Any errors or omissions noted? Make a motion to accept the minutes as read or written, presented. Okay, have a second? I have a second from Trustee Menard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bills? Our Senate, is there anything else extra? No additions or deletions? Okay, anyone have any comments on the bills?
No.
Motion to accept the bills or pay bills?
Okay. Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Menard and a second by Trustee Gadway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Correspondents, last one.
We have one this evening. Dear Village Board, this is a letter of resignation. I have accepted the public board's position in Florida. I want to thank you for the experience and chance to work here, effective June 23rd, 2019. Sincerely, Jeremy Gay.
Okay. I'd like to send a letter of regret on that. Okay, you want to accept the resignation with regrets?
Right.
Okay. I have a motion by Trustee Arnold and...
Second.
Second by Trustee Menard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion to amend the order.
Yes. I think he's gonna do well down there. Now, I'd like, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to advertise for one or more laborers in training for water plant operator. So, this would be about where Zach is, what his position is right now, because he's gonna be moving in as soon as he gets his certification, probably the end of, well, hopefully, the end of next month. He's filling that slot, and we need another person to be following him as a trainee. And so, I'd like to authorize the clerk to advertise for one or more positions for that as we need them.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Now, I'd like to request the executive session to discuss the employment history of several employees.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now, at the last meeting, a question came up about the procurement policy specifically regarding hiring consultants and why we didn't advertise or ask around, which we looked into that. And our procurement policy states specifically, "The following items are not subject to competitive bidding pursuant to General Municipal Law, Section 103. Purchase contracts under $2,000... Purchase contracts under $20,000 and public works contracts under $35,000." Furthermore, except when directed by the village board, no solicitation of written proposals or quotations shall be required under the following circumstances." And there's a list of them, but the one that pertains to this is acquisition of professional services. And a professional service that's accepted from this policy, which was just stated, is professional services, professional services for services requiring special or technical skill training or expertise. And that was the reason that we chose, who did, Mr. Peters' business, to oversee this development on the REC Center Development Project. And we'll be getting into an update on that pretty soon. I have a couple items down here. An update on the Empire Trail, State Trailhead, which, as you remember and recall, is this bike kind of rendezvous thing in the front of the parking lot here out by the Village sign. The state was up here last week from Watertown, measuring things and looking at things. And I understand it's gonna be completed by September or October. So, that's on track to go. The update on the REC Center grant. The playground is out for bid, and it'll be, the bids will come in and be awarded next week. Ask the administrator if she could just give us a briefing, just a brief synopsis of what you've been doing with Mr. Peters on this that we talked about this morning, you know, where we are with the...
Great. The bids have gone out. We will award them next week for the playground. And we've contacted the D E C, make sure that all the permits are in place. And we're going to, we're compiling information that we need to have an engineer. So, we'll go out for bids for engineering. That's gonna have to be done, and that's recommended by the people that have given us the grant through this gateway. So, we have to have an engineer, engineer the entire site. They'll make recommendations as far as the fields and the parking lot. So, we're in the process with that. And so, a lot of paperwork that has to be presented for the grant before we can actually start implementing the grant and purchasing. And the next step is to sign an agreement. We've already authorized, the board has already authorized us for, to accept the grant. The next will be a contract, written contract, to accept the grant. So, once we have that, then we can start spending and getting reimbursement on it.
Anyone have any questions? All right, seems to be rolling along the way. It should, we're trying to stay a little bit ahead of things. Like, last meeting, we did the seeker questionnaire, and we've done a few other things like that. Some of the board motions that you've made pertain to this. So, we can, we don't wanna be holding things up because we have to wait two weeks for another board meeting for something that's relatively simple and non-controversial. Okay, now, the next thing. We've been working on the village insurance policies. When I say "we," mostly it's been the administrator. I would estimate, I could be wrong on this, but I think she's got probably about 30 hours in this town. She said it's accurate. I mean, it's an incredible amount of hours. And what, this started, this process was, we had the loss of the dugout. And it was insured for $4,811 with a $2,500 deductible. And we called our insurance company that we've been using the last couple of years. And they said, "We're only gonna reimburse you for what you actually spent over and above the $2,500 and not the full replacement value as indicated in your policy that you've been paying premiums on." So, fortunately, this was a relatively minor loss, $4,800, as opposed to like, you know, four or five million for one of the bigger buildings or facilities here. So, when I saw that, and the reason we've been keeping it down is because we've got some, I don't know whether I, tin or workers or something, but these two guys came in and they're doing it for free. And they're doing a really, really good job. I'd like to give Mr. Gadway and Mr. Moore a round of applause. I mean, they did a hell of a job down there.
I mean, that thing is put together like cabinet work. I'm telling you, it's beautiful.
Very good. I think, did we get the rest of the roof yet?
That'll be done this week.
You know, waiting for some tin. And we've gotta get the, a roll of chain link fencing for the front and some stain. That's all that's gotta be done. The rec crew will be doing, they're gonna paint the inside of it with leftover paint from the outside of this building where we have all those gallons of paint. And they're gonna get some special wood preservative stain to put on the, is that cedar? Or what is that?
Yes.
Cedar siding that's on there. And I think it's gonna look real nice and really hold up well. And it's just, I was really impressed when I...
A natural cedar stain on it?
Yes.
Well, semi-transparent?
Not a solid stain. Semi-transparent. I don't think so. It's gonna be, we haven't picked it out yet. We wanna get something like a water seal kind of thing with maybe a tint of color in it. In other words, not gonna varnish it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it's gonna be some kind of sealer that seals the wood so it'll turn gray and, you know, and maybe...
Well, cedar's shodden anyhow, but still, I mean, if you put like a natural semi-transparent sealer on it,
Yeah. You know, that's what we're gonna look into, yeah. But that's all that's gotta be done. And like I said, our crew will do that.
Right, right.
So, okay, so that's where that is.
Yeah, and just make sure when they do it that they don't, I mean, run it down the, leave streaks and stuff like that.
Well, I think Trustee Gadway will be there to at least get them started. Then you can leave, but make sure they're on the right track. But I think they'll be able to do it okay. So, I'd like the administrator to brief you on this insurance a little more. We've reached out to another insurance vendor that we used to have before. We've spent a lot of time going over the policy. And we have a much better picture of what we're actually insured for, what we're covered, what we're not covered for. We're gonna reassess the values on the buildings and, you know, what we're paying to have insured. But the beginning of this thing looks like it's gonna save us, give away the punchline, about $10,000 a year. Initially savings without any, you know, whittling it down at all.
Right.
And I think we're gonna have a much more receptive age of managing this. So, does anyone want to fill in any more?
Sure. When I worked with the agency that gave us the new quote, they were extremely helpful, and I spent a lot of time with them learning about insurance. And we, he gave us a quote with the same amount of coverage and in some areas better. And the premium ends up being less. And we went over both the policies for the village, buildings and contents liability, as well as the fire department. I gave the policy to Chief LeBlanc to look over, and I spoke to him today, and he was very happy with the coverage. And I'd explained to him that hopefully with the savings, we'll be able to have somebody, a professional service come in within the next year to reappraise and to appraise all the buildings. They haven't been done in over five years. And that's what we're using for values of the buildings and the contents. And we know that that has to be changed. So, I'd like to have an outside source come in and give us an appraisal of all the buildings and the contents and talk to the different department heads. The department heads, as well as Chief LeBlanc, know what they have in their department and can help as far as the appraisal goes. I found that the insurance agency that I dealt with extremely helpful. Any questions I had, they could give me answers right off or get back to me within a few hours. They also said that if the board had any questions, they would come to a meeting and discuss whatever needed to be discussed with it. The deductibles will be the same as in the previous policy. And they wanted to assure us that if it was decided, the board decided to go with this insurance company, it will take effect July 1st. There'll be no lapse in insurance. And they will take care of any paperwork if we have to cancel with the previous insurance company. And there is one portion that they wanted me to explain to the board, and it's under commercial property, and it has to do with coinsurance. And it's basically what Mayor Baffo was talking about. But the difference, we have a $2,500 deductible, say the dugout. They have an agreed-upon amount. So, because we have such a large deductible and the dugout was insured for $4,900, if we did not need that $4,900, it would be an agreed-upon amount that the insurance company and the village would come to an agreement on that they would pay us for insurance. Most insurance companies ask that you have something insured at 100%. If the value of the Civic Center is valued at a million dollars for the building, that we insure it for a million. This insurance company says 90%. So, we don't have to have full insurance on it. It's always a good idea, and that's why we want to go with a reappraisal. So, I found it to be extremely helpful. And I learned a lot, an awful lot about insurance, more than I ever wants to know. So, with the board can make a decision tonight. And if you decide to go with this insurance company, we'll have paperwork signed tomorrow for both fire department and for village property.
Okay, so, I guess the, just get the name right here for the...
I don't know the first one.
No, I know that. It's okay. I know it. Okay, yeah. This one, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we switch the insurance, or that we buy our insurance for this coming year from Trident Insurance Brokerage, Eastern Insurance, Insuring Agency of the La Barge Agency. I'll second that. Is there a discussion?
Just have a question. There was an item line I had taken out of the La Barge page. It was crossed out. Said, "Commercial automobile, unavailed physical damage." That was taken out.
That's collision.
It's collision.
On the vehicles.
Okay.
The other insurance did not have it. The one that we currently have did not have it. This insurance put that in there just as normal procedure.
Yeah.
So, that would take out, so that would lower...
It has nothing to do with the fire trucks again?
No, no, that's totally separate. We're not touching that.
There's a separate policy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You also said that we only have to cover 90%. So, say if the Civic Center, something happened to it, would we only get reimbursed to the 90% or would we get full reimbursement?
It would have to be an agreed-upon value between the insurance company and the village. So, it's not set in stone that it would only be what we had. It would be, they know that at the time of insuring that things change, the cost of lumber, the cost of steel. So, they take that into consideration. So, it's not hard and fast. So, it's a negotiated, it's a negotiated amount. We generally keep it at 100% of what the appraisal of the building is. So, that's why I strongly request that we have appraisal and so does the insurance company and make sure we're not underinsuring or overinsuring. Yeah.
Well, what we've got is, it looked to me like, when I saw the list of the values of everything that we had based the other policy on, that one that was on the desk there, I don't know where that came from.
Standard values, yes.
Okay. They have, it looked to me like what they did, I don't know this for a fact, it looked to me like they took whatever our acquisition cost was of a facility and insured it for the whole amount. So, using this building as an example, let's say the building was, they had the parking lot insured. Well, need fire insurance for $45,000 on a parking lot. You know, that kind of stuff. They just, everything was added in there. I caught a couple things last year that we took out, like that blue building behind the water plant that's never been turned on. Well, we were insuring that for the previous four or five years for several hundred thousand dollars and paid premiums on that. And probably, we're gonna tear it down. You know, it's never been used. So, you know, we scratched that last year. But I mean, I'm not an expert to go through every building and say what they're worth and what the replacement value was. And then, the other thing is, we thought, like, just as a, for instance, the one that jumped out at myself and the administrator was the library. It was, we thought it was way under, under-valued. You know, I think they had like, contents was $100,000 or something?
Correct, yes. And the building was only $100,000.
$100,000 is, you know, not very much for books and stuff that's in there. So, anyway, so that's what we need. We'll have enough money. One of the recommendations from the administrator was, "In the savings that we have from voting for one policy..." See, we're budgeted for the larger amount. But the money between the two, we can use some of that money to pay for a revaluation, assessment of what it is. So, I think we're in real good shape this year, both in coverage and in the cost of it.
Very nice.
Okay, did we vote on that?
The motion, do we have that?
I'll make a motion that we vote from Noelen Insurance and Imar. Is that who we were with?
Yeah, we already did that. Yeah, we did that. That part we did. We didn't vote. No, we didn't vote. We're in discussion.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay. Then we're discussing, 'cause you had the question. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then we need a motion that authorizes the mayor to sign the contract tomorrow?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, the next one I have here is a resolution for the sewer rates. Now, the resolution's very complex. So, I think about it and then punt it to our Senate if there's any questions that I left out. But I think basically what this does is, we voted to raise the sewer rates a dollar a month on residential. Is there any other changes other than that in this, our Senate? Okay, so...
Basically, rates went up a dollar.
Right.
Basically, grading went up a dollar.
Yes, exactly. So, I would offer this as a resolution. I'll move this forward as Resolution Number 2019-20. And, "Whereas subdivision two, section 452 of General Municipal Law was amended to permit the establishment imposition of sewer rates by resolution subject to a public hearing and public law..." Wait a second. Should we do the, we have a public hearing tonight on this?
We already did.
Already had one.
We already had a public hearing, you just didn't vote the resolution.
Right, okay. I want to give the cart before the horse here. So, um, we had the public hearing. Section fourteen dash fourteen hundred was amended to clarify the village authority to establish imposed sewer rates pursuant to general municipal law. Whereas the board trustees in Rouse's Point, Clinton County, did on twenty-second day of April twenty-nineteen, hold a public hearing at Halsted Hall at the civic center, and thereafter regarding imposed sewer rates based on the following formulas. And it says essentially, um, the units will be charged thirty-eight dollars a month for single family. Everything else remains the same. So I will move that to the floor.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Right?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I'd like to appoint a floodplain manager, and I'm appointing John Cooper, our co-enforcement officer. And I think that, I think what that entails is that he'll be on a mailing list of stuff from FEMA and occasional meetings on it.
No, no, I spoke to Mickey about this, and he does it over there, so...
Yeah.
I don't know exactly what it entails at this time, but I'll give what I'm a...
I know, he had a meeting today.
Yeah, she was going to try to go down, see if she could pick up some information for us.
Yeah.
I didn't, I wasn't able to get it over the flood meeting.
Okay. So you know, a motion to... Yeah, okay, so I'm making a motion to appoint John Cooper's floodplain manager. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's all I have for right now.
One more thing, in the surplus for the...
Oh, yes. Forgot that on here. Um, like authorization to surplus the old playground equipment, um, by the board as excess, but not to be removed until it's the right time when the new stuff is coming in.
So we just need to have...
Well, we'll decide how to get rid of it. You know, I'm thinking probably, probably donate it to another municipality or something, or, you know, we can put bids, but I just want to declare the surplus so that it won't interfere with the new stuff coming in. But I don't want to take it out and then have no playground for two or three months till the new one comes in, so...
The thing is, we can't, we can't give that term thing away.
No, I'm talking mainly about the more modern ones, the plastic ones there.
Right, because that's illegal, you can't have that.
You, you, you're supposed to that. Villages have to cut that up. Just disassemble it, disassemble it, put it up or whatever.
So anyways, that's what I'd like to do, is declare that surplus, but not get rid of it until we're ready to. I need a second for that. Second by trustee Dart, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, trustee Arnold.
I got the fire department. They'd like to make a little parking lot. If you're looking at the fire department on the left-hand side, they got it staked off right now. They'd like to have it, uh, either the village crew do it on the rainy day. That's when they're planning to do it, it's okay with the village board. And they got all the grindings that they got in the back of the village garage, that they can use that for the top.
Are you talking about like making like diagonal parking next to the thing?
No, no, it's not for parking, it's mostly for training. Like to pull the ladder truck out and train right on the side of the building.
Oh.
In that vacant lot of, between Antil, Tommy Antil and...
No, I, I don't know, how big do they want to make it into a parking lot? The whole thing, or...
No, 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 it's only probably fifty by fifty.
Okay, well, I don't have a problem with that. They just, what we do, dig it up, Brian, dig it out about a foot and a half and then fill it in with the grindings and foot?
Yeah, foot.
Foot, foot, foot.
And all the dirt, they talked to Mrs. Antil, and all the dirt, because there's a big hole where the old Sterns' house was.
Yeah.
It's sunk down quite a ways. And she said if the, if the village wants, instead of hauling the dirt away, they could push the dirt right there, the top soil and stuff, and just level it off and stuff, so...
Well, it doesn't sound to me like it's going to be any out-of-pocket expenses.
No.
Time.
Yeah.
So I, I don't have any problems. Uh, I'd like to make that a motion.
I'd like to make that a motion, uh, make a small parking lot for the fire department, uh...
To the south side of the, of the station.
To the south side of the station, right.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No. Okay.
Okay, now we got the pickup truck, wastewater plant pickup truck.
Yeah.
What are we doing with that?
Well, we're looking into buying one on state contract, and it turns out it's a little more complicated than we thought. If it delays much longer, we might be in a twenty-twenty mile a year. So we're going to see if we can pick something up on state contract, new, of twenty-nineteen. So that's where we are with that. Hopefully it'll be done pretty soon.
Now, the pickup is going to be the same as Mr. Balfour's truck?
No, it's going to be an eight-foot box, regular cab.
Why an eight-foot box, regular cab?
No, it's not, the board has said twice now, is we want to go with clone somewhere, Mr. Balfour's truck.
I don't recall that at all. I recall when we did this, when we discussed this thing.
Well, I, I recall because our administrator was sitting in one of the meetings. It happened, the talk happened before one of our board sessions. And the board agreed, and all three of us sat here, four of us sat here, and said that getting a straight truck like that is not a sensible idea for the knowledge.
That's the way I look at it.
Well, I'll tell you, you've got a two-man department, you're buying a six-man cab with a reduced cargo capacity. Now, does that make any sense?
I don't know if that's...
And it costs about thirty-five-hundred dollars extra for that option.
I don't know if it's a six-man cab or not, but...
Well, it's a backseat.
It's a backseat.
Yeah, it's a backseat, but it's not a, it's just an extended cab, and aim to six passengers. I mean...
It has a full-bend seat in it.
Well, yeah, I know it's got a full-bend seat, but you can't, you...
It's got three sets of seat belts back there.
I wouldn't want to ride to New York in it.
What are they going to put in the backseat?
What are they going to put in the back of the truck? I asked, I asked the sewer plant operator today, Mr. Gate, if they were going to, what they put in the back of there. He said, "We never put nothing in the back of the pickup."
Then why do they even have a pickup truck? Why don't we get them a sedan? They're even cheaper. I mean, I just thought they needed a pickup truck.
You gotta use your head here.
I am using my head back.
They gotta, they gotta have a pickup truck, okay?
But they don't ever put anything in the back.
Well, I'm saying, don't put nothing in back. I mean, they throw shovels back there and stuff like that.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Well, they don't need an eight-foot box to throw a shovel in the back or a pick or something like that.
Well, I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll get prices for both, and then when we decide what we're going to buy, the board's going to vote on what we're going to buy anyway.
Well, the truck that we bought, Mr. Balfour's, was twenty-six thousand dollars under state contract.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Or twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
And for another eighteen hundred, we could have had a, a super truck.
Why would you want a super truck?
No, I'm just saying.
For resale value.
For resale. You say you want to sell these things in three years.
Well, we're going to try it, yeah. I think the idea was, the idea was, we get a, we get a thirty-eight-thousand-dollar truck for twenty-eight thousand. This is last year's prices. We keep it three years, we have about probably thirty thousand miles on it. We're going to trade it in, we're probably going to get, I'm guessing, probably twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars for a truck that we have for three years.
I'm not with a eight-foot box.
Do you move to do that with a regular cab?
No.
Straight eight-foot box, because nobody's going to want it?
I don't believe that. I don't, well, people that work with their trucks use eight-foot boxes. People that have it as a car, a family car, don't really use it as a truck. Yeah, they want a backseat in it. But, you know, this is a work truck, contracted.
It's a work truck, yeah.
And that's what it's supposed to be.
That's right. Mr. Balfour, you, you don't have no problem with this truck? Same thing, it's going to be the same thing?
It's a work truck. That's what, that's what his model is, work truck.
I, I understand that. I was thinking, what I was thinking is, if we got one of each size, and we'll see how they come out. This whole thing is experimental. We bought two trucks, we're seeing about the three-year trade-in, and see how they come out. You're not, the idea is, you don't buy things that you don't need for yourself. You don't buy options for the next guy to have. And I think that we got a sweet enough deal with this, that the price is going to be, the resale value on this is going to be close to what we paid for it, but so inexpensive compared to regular trucks for sale, that I don't think we're going to have any problem in all selling it.
That's similar to the same thing as buying a two-wheel-drive truck versus a four-wheel-drive truck. You know? With an eight-foot box and a six-foot box.
You may never need the four-wheel drive, but you're going to buy it because it's going to sell better.
That's right. That's right.
Get, get what prices, and we'll, we'll vote on it.
Yes, we're going to do it.
We got to spike it out, we got to get, it's just as easy to get two as to get one, you know?
Right. Well, sure, get three, three. Go for Dodge, go for, uh, uh, whatever.
I'd like to get all three, Ford, Dodge, and Chevy.
And get single cab and a ten-eighth cab.
Yeah.
Because there'll be a full, full crew cab, you can get a six, seven cab.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, you don't need a, a full, uh, crew cab.
But it's nice to have, especially in the winter time, if you need to put something in the back. You know, and they bring water rifles down.
Okay. So we're gonna, we'll vote on that when the time's up.
Right.
Okay. And also around, uh, looking at the Christmas tree. That tree is in pretty bad shape. And I don't think, it's, it's not in the budget now to dig it down, but we ought to look into it next year to put it in the budget, taking, to replace it. To replace it. Cut it down and put in like a nice twenty-foot tree there or something.
Or a gazebo.
Or the gazebo, yes.
There's a little one behind it that is just...
It's pretty well dead on the inside and stuff. We'll have the village crew, when they get time, to grip it out of there and stuff like that. So, and if we can show somebody how to trim the hedges, or the shrubs around the gazebo and stuff, because it, it does look pretty ratty around there. So I'd like to see that done. You know, the, the rec park, you're, do that and stuff. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Dart?
Uh, I'm all set for now.
Trustee Menard?
I have nothing for a seat.
Trustee Gadway?
The, uh, piece of the dugout, uh, it will be completed on Thursday. It'll be, uh, Bishop Ten last week came in and vetted, so we're going to put that out this time of year.
Yeah.
So that will be in, and it will be completed except for the street, the street and that. So I pick up on all of that this week.
Okay. Uh, other reports? Administrator?
I have nothing this evening.
And treasure? Other works?
Um, you can see that the grinding's done. They came in. I'd like to thank Alan Recine with the town, sent three trucks, very helpful to us. They had four trucks running, R2 and Metalens 2, and they just kept up with, get the grindings.
Did they get that all done in one day, Brian?
One day.
I couldn't believe it. They were flying.
One day.
Well, if you wouldn't have had Recine's trucks, you wouldn't have...
Oh, no, we wouldn't have done it.
We wouldn't have done it in one day.
It would have been two. So I, I'd like to thank Alan, for sending a couple trucks.
Thank you very much.
We got something for our tax office, huh?
Yes.
Pay to the tax office.
Yes.
Well, I'll send them all. It's nice to have, uh, shared services.
Yes.
It's helpful for us.
Yep.
And for them, if they ever need anything.
Exactly.
I didn't get a chance to go to the library, but the line crew told me that they put the lights in the cellar, and everything looks really nice down there, and it looks great.
Cancelled my cataract surgery, so...
It's beautiful. So they've been working on some transformer repairs throughout the village, so we get, uh, two more to do this week, hopefully. And if we, I get a rainy day, a grizzly day, we'll probably dig up that parking lot. We're trying to fit in little jobs here and there, when we can't work out the streets.
When are you planning to do the sewer line here, the one?
Fall.
Yeah, you don't want to do it now, because of the Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, and, yeah. And we have to get ready for the paving to go.
Right.
There's a lot of prep work to do. They worked on, they worked on a valve today that was just...
Yeah, I see it on Academy, on the end of Academy?
Yeah.
Yes, I see them up there.
Yeah, we have to make sure that the repairs of the valves and the manholes and everything are good before we pave those streets.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of prep work.
Yeah.
Well, they got to build curbs too, don't they? Okay. Okay, Mr. Cooper?